Okay. The item number one, review that provides for some division. We got a letter late today saying they want to pull that. Now, this is one of the disadvantages of this new law. You know, we published this in back in Wednesday. Things happen between Wednesday and so if there were people here for this tonight, sorry, it wouldn't happen. And there are other changes. The next one also is number two. We've moved to Thursday, which is the current status of the property rebau program. The person who's our consultant will be here on Thursday. And so we thought we'd talk to him and get his take on all of this before we bring in Thursday night. I guess we're going to start with item three, which is set a public hearing for proposed dial-a-bus fare increase and changes in service. This is as a consequence of our cost reduction plan. And there's a white piece of paper here. Well, I'm looking for the one. It's attached to it. I've got it. It's attached to it. The county has a procedure. And it says pursuant to federal transit, a administration regulation, the Orange County Planning Department steps to following written procedures for public outreach when fare increases or major service reductions are proposed by the transit operator, the town of Goshen and the town of Chester. The first thing we have to do is a public hearing shall be scheduled to occur no sooner than 30 days upon submission of the initial fare increase and/or major service reduction proposal to the Orange County Planning Department. We sent that off. What day was it, Lou, last week? Thursday?
Thursday or Friday.
Thursday or Friday. So we need to set a public hearing. It says the public meeting announcement will be published in a legal notice in the official county newspapers and shall be posted at least 20 to 30 days prior to the public meeting. Additionally, the provider will inform the public through media coverage, sign postings on all buses, in municipal halls, libraries, and bus shelters, and on the web if available. So what we have to do tonight is to set a public hearing at least 30 days from last Friday.
That'll be the first work session in March. I don't know the date.
I can give you the date. I think it's the fifth. The first meeting would be the fifth.
The fifth would be good. Okay. So would someone like to make a motion that we set a public hearing on the proposed dial-a-bus fare increases and service changes for 7:30 or soon thereafter on March 5th at our work session at 41 Webster Avenue, Goshen Town Hall, Goshen, New York?
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion?
This affected March 1st.
No, that's wrong.
Okay.
That was...
All right.
But that's good. Yeah. What we did, Kenny, we...
Go ahead.
No, 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 no. We did all of this thinking we could do it then, but we can't.
All right.
Yeah. Well, that's not going to go out to anybody. Okay. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Ocean carries.
One other note on that, please.
Sure. Go for it.
Val, this probably is going to wind up being a fine soul record for this because the county's taking, I would say, the paper, so we've got to check that out.
Usually something like if we would put the vote.
But we have to call the county to make sure we're putting where they do their public notice and so forth.
Where we want their...
That follows the protocol. If we want to do other ones, that's...
No, no problem.
If we want to publicize the other ones, that's fine too, but we have to, according to the rules and regulations, publicize them there. I'll give you a copy of this.
No, I got it.
Oh, you have a copy?
I'll tell them and...
Oh, yeah.
Actually, there are six items in here, and I looked at them all, and, you know, we're going to have to set the schedule to make sure we meet all the criteria of the bureaucracy at its best. I've looked at this thing and I've had my gracious, you know. What are you going to do? Okay. Well, the next item is New York Farms LLC. We're ready to... We got your letter. Want to get on the schedule, so it's yours. I had put down to discuss establishment of the water and sewer districts and the conservation easement parcel aid and the property transfer conservation easement parcel B, which we had talked about a few months back.
We're really, tonight, we'd like to just dust off and answer any questions that you may have regarding... Any questions regarding the petitions that were filed with the town board for the extension of the sewer, existing sewer and order districts for... Hamiltonian Park. I'm reading all the street names. And I believe this board has held a public hearing in May of 2011. What we'd like you to do is, if you haven't already, close those public hearings and act on our petition.
Okay. Let me ask another question. A question. The village, by the way, as we have said, our district with the village, and we do have an intermunicipal agreement, and I did get a letter from them saying that they were okay with expanding the water and sewer districts.
The sewer district.
Water and sewer districts.
Well, water is our jurisdiction, too.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sewer district for them, yeah.
Well, I'm on the technical...
Okay. That's good, Louie.
That's what it is, isn't it?
Right. Question I was going to ask about this thing. Oh, let's talk about the fund transfer. We got this discussion last time we're here, and I can't recall exactly what we agreed to.
Well, the last time that we were very active in resolving both the sewer and the water. Let me, I'll talk about water first. We are, and currently, we're, the plans are at the health department, we're in the final process of getting our approvals from the state and local health department. Those approvals include the onsite independent water system, wells, stand pipe, actually reservoir, fire pumps, the home business, chlorination and treatment. During the, since we petitioned during that process, one of the ideas that the town approached us with was the idea of connecting to Hamiltonian Park's water district and expanding the, because if you recall, our initial petition was to form our own water district. You know, and wisely, he said, let's expand, and of course, we agreed to that. It makes sense economically, you know, economy of scale. So we worked with your engineer. We developed the concept of connecting. We looked at engineering those drawings and looked at calculations of connecting. Both sides agreed that that's a good thing to do, and it's a compatible alternative. During that time, we also prepared cost estimates because obviously, how we're proposing it right now, there are some savings. We don't have to build our reservoir. We don't have to provide fire pumps. So we presented those core savings to your county engineer. He reviewed them, and we, I think we came, we all came to an agreement, this board and the applicant, that there was some residual savings of, I think, I believe it was $84,000, a little over $84,000.
Right, that's it.
Right. And that...
Are you joking on that one?
Oh, no, not at all. Believe me, these numbers, this is nuts. The, and we agree to that. There has been, there was a, an agreement drafted. We went through power, I believe it's four revisions of that agreement. And it's my understanding that both sides agreed to that, that we would make that physical connection upon completion and signing of the maps, that $84,000 would be transferred to the town, and that would be the signing of the first phase of those subdivision drawings. The second component to this is the waste water treatment. We had the original proposal, and we went through the secret process, which we prepared an environmental impact statement, that we were going to the village. At that time, the administration was in favor of looking for outside customers, and we were going to be one of those customers. Couple administrations back and forth. Bottom line is, thanks to your diligence and the village board's diligence, you resolved the issues between the two municipalities. There's a new intermunicipal agreement. We patiently waited for the conclusion of that. One of the things that we talked about with this board is contributions towards the I-9 that would be, that could, or contributions from the applicant to the district to eliminate I-9. And that number was $130,000, which we all agree upon. And again, that agreement was crafted and gone back and forth, at least three or four, actually, before, last one I had, it was the fourth revision. And we all agreed that that was the numbers and that those funds would be transferred to the town simultaneously with the signing of the filed maps, which would be phase one.
No, I have not seen a copy of that.
I can, I will provide you.
Okay.
Personally, with the hand-delivered copies that I provided this board, my transmittal letters, and I'll give you all the drafts. I also believe that your attorney was quoted at one point.
You say it?
I have.
Oh, it's him?
This board has. We've worked very hard with this board.
Well, we had a public hearing. We had a public hearing. I didn't see any sense then.
Yeah, sometimes passed, so it's probably nine months. We're just waiting, we were waiting for the...
Well, but we had a meeting in here. We had a meeting in here, minds, and because there was some of this...
Sure, about money.
...amount of money I was going to go.
Correct.
And I haven't seen any sense then.
That's probably true.
Okay.
Yeah, that's accurate.
Okay. But what you...
Right. The initial proposal was that we were going to pay that amount over three phases. The filing of phase one, we were going to pay a third, a third, and a third.
So now it's all the signing of the map?
It's all, it's what it requested this board, we requested that, the signing of the map.
Okay.
That's correct.
Just like, are you ready to have the map signed? I don't believe so.
Um, we are...
I know you're making progress.
We're, right now, I mean, like I said, you know, one of the things, unfortunately, why we want to resolve this with your board is we need to resolve the final design of the sewer and the final design of the water. And if we're going to make the connection to Hamiltonian Park, that means we have to pull back our application at the health department. We need to re-engineer them. We may have to refile fees. We need to get back into the review process again. So we're anxious to resolve that. Once we get those, the key conditions for our permits are resolving sewer and water districts, whether it's transportation cooperation, you know, private, or an expansion, that's one of the key conditions to our conditional final approval. Outside agency permits. We've gotten all the D E C permits, we've got Army Corps permits, we're looking at the health department review, and it's really a plan review, it's not a permit, but we're looking to resolve that, and that's where we are right now, and we would like to...
So you have everything except the health department, though?
Health department.
And then you're ready to go?
No, no, no. We have, we have also on top of that a whole host of little things that the planning board is tacked on.
How far? The reason I'm asking these questions, we want to get working on this I-9 because I still have in the back of my mind that there may be one of these forms in the D E C that you can only put so many houses on. We've got to show improvement to this thing. I haven't communicated with them, but I've heard these rumors on the street. And so it is going to be important that we get on with it, and I want to set it up such that I can get the engineering board there and tell us where we're going to have to spend this money to make the needed improvement, so...
Doug?
Yes?
You're preaching to the choir here.
Okay.
We would more than happy, we would love to walk in tomorrow and have you sign the maps.
No, no, you've got to have all those things done, I guess, per the conditional final, so that, I guess, all those things are completed to the satisfaction of the planning board, correct?
That's right.
When's that going to occur? Do you have any idea?
Let me just, I'm going to go down the key components.
Okay.
You don't have to worry little things about, I mean, there's, here are the key components of the conditions. Resolution of sewer and water districts.
We can do that. Yeah.
It's in your, well, it's in your court.
Yeah, that's right. No problem with that.
We have to give any outside agency review approvals and permits. We're 90% there. We're holding off on the final resubmission of our health department permit until we know whether we're connecting to Hamiltonian or not connected.
That's going to happen soon.
Right. Okay. So I'm just, I'm running through the, because these are the key components.
We've given you that today.
Right. The other one is finalizing the dedication easements, filing those with the tenant.
Are they ready?
As far as we're concerned, we're done.
Do we have those then?
No, we do not.
Well...
I'm told, I'm told that they were modified, but we don't have, I get a few...
You'll have them tomorrow morning.
I don't have signed documents yet, but I'm told that they are.
What I'm getting at is Thursday night. Yeah, Thursday night. We can, we can...
Dennis and Kelly will have those tomorrow morning independently.
And they have to be, because people waited for that for a long time.
Louie, we've been working with Kelly, we've made some changes. We've got a November, we've resubmitted our latest resubmission, our second-to-last submission was prior to November. We got a memo from her with a couple of comments. Those comments have been addressed, they were resubmitted. Sean had got some comments.
Planning board.
Just comments on the...
I have some to eat. Oh, okay.
Yeah, they are. I'm just talking easements.
All right, okay. But there is one very critical thing, though. And that's Hamiltonian Park residents.
Should they be?
I want to make sure it's smoking here again tonight, so that we don't get it up Thursday night and it's got the wrong information. This, there are no road, through road or the...
You're going to own that piece of land.
No, but it's got to be in the, in the, there's an easement in the official document.
Yeah, there's a couple items of that nature. It would have to be a change, but, yeah. There's a couple items that I'm concerned about, which I would address with Mr. Sweeney. It should not be a problem.
Okay. Well, just want to make sure that one's in there, because that...
Oh, yeah, right. There was a couple other things on it, about the path and all. They can give us the right to run through if you want to extend it. I don't, of course, don't want to do that, but that's really the effect of you guys. You don't care, really. Yeah. There's a couple little things, you know.
Was it that...
Actually, there was five items on that list that you were talking about. On your jurisdiction, definitely. Right. Definitely.
What was the restriction on the easement so that, didn't that have to be done before everything else was finalized? So it would be that no other board could change that?
Correct.
It was done in the final documentation, they could change.
Right.
So there was something that had to be done, and that's what we're, to get that, so we could do it.
That instrument would have to be recorded with a covenant, if you will.
Okay.
And then when we take it, it's in existence, and it couldn't be...
In existence, that's what I thought.
Well, the parcel is not in existence right now. The parcel will be in existence when we file phase one. Those, all those documents have to be filed simultaneously. The turnover agreements, the conservation easements, phase one subdivision plans, all of them, because phase one subdivision plan is going to create open space A, open space B, I forget which one we're giving them to town, I think it's B or B. So those lots, actually, they don't exist now. They exist when we file that phase one document. And everything gets filed at the same time.
The easements have to, that, they're lots.
Good.
That doesn't, I mean, they own that property. They can give us the easement first.
Yeah.
I thought you, I just want to make sure we do what we all agreed that we were going to do, was my understanding that, number one, we would first get that easement and file that, no matter what it was on. Once that was filed, then you could subdivide the lots, sign the maps, do phase one, all of that stuff. But my understanding, well, you know, I mean, was that first comes the easement so that no other board can change it. I could be wrong, but I think that's how, that's how we're supposed to work, not with this filing of these subdivisions. And, I mean, we're all on the same page. We want to, but we want to make sure we protect them like we said we were going to. That's all. However, it works. Let me ask this question, Dennis. Can we have all that information ready by Thursday night?
Yes.
In a written form, that we can act on Thursday night?
I mean, sure, that, like Steve was saying, tomorrow morning, the documents, you know...
I'm going to put on the agenda for Thursday night, expanding the district, the water and sewer districts, and the easement, et cetera, et cetera, and transfer the property, all the stuff that we need to do.
But we can't transfer property. We can't, we...
Okay.
People are creating.
I'm asking.
I know what you're saying. I know it, yeah.
I'm not a lawyer, and I don't know what comes first.
I know where we're going. Let me just say that you asked us what it's going to take to get the signing of the map.
Yes.
We need to resolve the sewer and water districts so we know what the final designs of the water is.
Right. We've got that.
That's key.
Thursday night.
Right.
Okay. Thursday night.
Next item on the agenda is the, all the eas, I mean, the stack of easements and lots and dedication, I mean, it's just thick. If you're worried about just having that...
When I asked, listen, I've had this on this agenda for months. And every time I get ready to go, Mr. Sweeney has not done anything on it.
Well, in fairness, I don't know, because we don't have them. I've seen graphs.
Well, I'm talking about the real employee.
Yeah, no, they don't exist. They probably exist tomorrow, you know.
Well, they're ready. If they can exist tomorrow, then we'll...
Yeah, I'm guessing.
Okay.
And, you know, as soon as you understand, the real employee, I assume what you are going to give to us is an original signed one by your client. Well, I don't want to just blank gun execute ones.
That's hot?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly. We're all talking the same.
What's the next item after that?
Um, for the town board?
No, no, the conditional things you need to do, so we can, I'm trying to get an idea when we will be ready to sign these matters.
It's, we've been working diligently, working with the planning boards to resolve these expensive list of conditions for, since January of 2010.
Okay.
Since we had our joint permits from the D E C.
Right.
We're whittling them down, but these are the, there's some things that are driven. In other words, we need to finalize designs, we need to finalize this, and that's, the water line is a key item for us.
Well, in terms of the, when you, what's your schedule? I mean, you must be backing all your construction, so on and so on, off those signed maps. What's your goal date for that?
We'd love to...
We've been, that's what you'd love to do, but where do you...
Basically, we've, I've got Steve, Peter Zach and Val on top of these guys to get this stuff done. So as this stuff comes in, P and P can do their design work, it can get submitted. So we're trying to, as quickly as possible. We want this to move as quickly as possible.
Or you want to get on with it?
We want to continue what we started.
Okay. Dennis?
Yep.
As a non-planning board person, can the maps be signed before all those conditions are done, or do you have to wait for the last one's done?
No, we have to wait. In other words, they cannot be signed before all those conditions are come on.
Okay. So, I, that's my question.
Yeah, so, just to clear the air, one, I think you're talking months, by time we get through health department and so on. So, you know, realistically, probably, if we're lucky, people may...
I'll say that the local health department, given the current climate that's out there, has been great because they're waiting for things to review.
Correct. And in fairness, from the board's point of view, I think it's fair to say that you folks did not want to sign off on a lot of these things. You know for a certainty what the timeline was, and you had some definitive control over the fact this was actually going to come to pass, if you will, as opposed to approving it, and then, no disrespect to the other applicant tonight, and they just walk away. They've been here for weeks.
Too languished.
Please, 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 and suddenly, you know, gone.
Well, again, my impetus to move this thing along is so I can start working, we can start work on this I-9 problem.
Correct.
Because I hate to get the first two or three houses are ready to go, and they can't get permits to build them or whatever it is, because the D E C said, no, you've got too much I-9.
Right. It is concerning. But you have to understand, so you will not receive any monies until all these things that they've been talking about are...
They can't do it, that's right.
Right. Just so you understand, yeah.
Sure.
Which is, so what, I think it will, but that's me, and I don't work at, you know, just try to be realistic, you know.
You know, it...
How long have we been talking?
A long time.
And I'm not pointing the finger, I'm just saying, I think it takes time. We're, you know, a lot of them, once we get done here, then we're back to the planning board, we're back to the planning board's agendas, you know, meeting schedule, and so you're right. I mean, unfortunately, you know, just given the nature of the piece, you know, it takes time.
As Doug said, we don't have any knowledge, in terms of what term, whatever maps we have needed.
Understood.
But you're still working on it, and we can't move until those things are completed. We're ready, we've been ready to go. I mean, into, on this project. We have been, we want to go on this project, just so you know that. So whatever's holding it up is right, going to be on this board's side. We'll sign off on anything that's ready to be signed off on.
Okay. Well, that would be the sewer and water.
Right. See, yeah, we've got to close those public hearings.
Okay.
You've got to adopt the proper resolutions.
Right. Okay. I'd like to do that Thursday.
Okay. Then we'll do it Thursday. Yeah, I, I'm sorry. We did not close the public hearings.
I, I...
It took so long, I can't, I apologize.
I had to look through the minutes.
No, I wanted to go through the minutes.
Yeah. It's possible, maybe it was, I didn't see if it was closed.
Yeah, exactly. I have to go back and look.
The only thing we might have been waiting for are comments from the county or the health department or anything like that in the public hearing, other than that, and I'm not sure if we got those yet or not, as part of the public hearing.
I agree with that.
All right.
It's got to be...
I think what we can do tomorrow, we'll get Val to go back to those meetings, to that public hearing, find out what, what transfer, because I can't recall. And the plan will be to put it on the docket, the agenda, Thursday night, and we'll go from there. And Dennis, it would be that everything in regards to the conservation easements, we'll get that done.
Yeah. I guess some of them will be, I'm just going to the public hearing, June 23.
Yeah.
Yeah, I prepared a resolution for enactment or adoption on June 23 of 2011.
Right.
So you're talking eight, seven, eight, nine months ago, and we did not, obviously, we did not have a resolution.
No.
Yeah, but we were contemplating at that time, and then we ran through the various resolutions.
Okay.[1643.22]
That's already comes on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I kept it on the agenda. For more information, I mean, it's still, it hasn't been on there half a dozen times anymore.
No doubt, yeah.
Okay, all right, so anyway, does that kinda get us together then, where we're at?
So, just so we're clear, Thursday night will be a resolution prepared for the, for, I suppose, the public hearings for the sewer and water.
If they haven't.
If they haven't.
Yeah.
And that, the, the petitions that have been filed with board, uh, go, move to authorize the expansion.
Unless there's some reason or concern on the board's part to modify some provisions, yeah. Because, you know, remember, and sometimes you can do those.
Absolutely. Yes.
Okay, so, you're gonna have to.
Now, the, the, I, I know when you were dealing with the building directly, there were all kinds of things, all that's by the wayside. And this resolution should, because it's expansion of what we already have, so.
One of the things that's moving us, I think, what you had said in front of the committee, is that we might sign maps so that they're at one point to transfer.
Right.
That's months away.
Right.
So, why should we be pushing this issue for Thursday night, with all, it appears to me, professionals have to do a lot of due diligence on all these easements and sewer and water things? Why should we be pushing this so quickly for the Thursday night deadline, when it's not gonna move the money any quicker than this?
No, but they can't get them, they can't.
Department of Health or.
They can't get in line, they can't get in the process.
Until we have the.
Once Doug, like, in our.
I mean, we, everything that's on the table now, I have to tell you, has been reviewed, to an extent that I personally can't believe. Uh, it's been reviewed. Uh, what we're trying to do now is finalize, and there's one component for, on the water design, which is, are we connecting or not? Because if we are, then let, let us go back, we have, it's a major revision on our part, you know, we're going back to the public department again. Uh, but we wanna get that going, that's, that's the driving force. Everything else is done, we have, we have our joint permits from the D E C, we have the army corps permits, we have, sign off by everybody.
You need to just, you need to just.
If you're a member, because we haven't approved the expansion of the Hamilton Park District, they have to go to the health department with a plan showing referencing their own water system. That has to be modified, withdrawn, and a new plan submitted showing they're gonna go to. We made it orally, we, we did not do it legally or.
The health department basically says to us, they say to us, we say we have the commitment from the town board, they say, show it to us.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, but in all honesty, then, when we got that letter from the board, that wasn't enough to go forward, it wasn't just the concrete, it said, proceed, but you couldn't proceed because it was a what-if.
Well, we're.
Now, there's no what-if.
We could not, right, Lou, you're right, we did not have.
And that's why we've been waiting, waiting for you guys to.
Not us, we did not get, uh, the commitment from the village that they would give us, those seventy-five.
After.
They withheld those specifically.
Yeah, once, after we got the, after we signed the I and A, December, a week later, we got.
That's why we're back.
This is glad.
All right, let me ask one other thing.
Okay.
I'll make a request. How about that, in regard to, because we're gonna try to put all this stuff down when it comes. I still see a real, real need from an insurance perspective on the I and I. Would it be possible to get a third of that upfront once we shortly get these, uh, uh, these latest, every, every nod that we had to turn on the town board's done? I always, I make that request, because I really, I don't know, no one's told me that they may have this formula that, in the D E C, that you can't hook up new houses as long as, as long as the village is in state that they're in regarding I and I problems.
And, and you're aware of that, right, Steve? Yeah, get on the table.
We're aware that everybody in the town and village are talking about it.
Well, see, again, just so the board is aware too, that the, the D E C has taken a position that, or may take a position, vis a vis the violations and the consent order that they're trying to impose upon the village, that there may be severe restrictions on any further connections, if you will, to the village's sewer system, and, you know, compounding it, it, this lake with water, that'd be health department. But the point is, I think the board is genuinely worried that they don't wanna put you guys in a bad position, the town either, and, and go ahead, authorize these things, pass the necessary resolutions and whatnot, and then to be overruled by the state if they have some other criteria, which we're not really privy to, to be honest with you, because we can see the village, and all I know is what's been transferred.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you that, and, and you have copies of them, uh, we have our joint permits, those are from the D E C, uh, New York State D E C, so all those permits have been issued. Um, we've been working with them, plan reviews, uh, and there's, and we know, we know how we're first of all, as you know, how we're first of all, but, you know, let's say that the worst-case scenario is that that happens. Once we get this administrative step out of the way, and we can get our design approved by the health department, we can go ahead and start making our improvements. At the same time, you can be making your improvements, because we're not gonna ask for a C O for at least another six months. So, you know, we, we feel that there's, in the, in, in the timeframe, uh, when we're, because, again, it's building permit and C O, that's what this is all driven about, you know, that there's time to do whatever we need to get done. Uh, but, you know, what, if, because I'm assuming that we're all on the same page.
You know, that mean that to me, you can do what you'd like to do, I mean, it, it's balls in your court, I'm just trying to put the insurance on the table.
Right.
And I'm saying, you know, forty thousand dollars upfront, I think we can get a good start on this. Um, a little bit less than a third, you know, and, I, I just think, but, you know, that's your call, I'm just, I'm making the request, um, and we'll go from there, okay? And, and the water, we don't need to worry about, it's just the I and I, and, and I think that, um, based, based on what Mr. Lindsay told me, that if we, for that kind of money, we might make a pretty significant impact, enough that if somebody does come out of the woodwork with a consent order that they've got to sign off on, or whatever, that we, we can show that we've done some things that subs, for the best part.
Let's just summarize this, so I understand, up until now, we have not wanted to formally expand the district, because we could not get a commitment that they would be allowed to build those seventy-five homes and hook up to the sewer, am I correct? Until the, until the road's built.
No, that's fair.
Okay, so now, we are at the point where the village said that they would allow us to build. They stop what they can control, so now, if we do expand those two districts formally, that's all we have to do, but nothing, and if they can't build, can someone else build, or something else happen, or can we reverse that if we have? In other words, what, what's the risk, now that we know the village will do, what's the risk of, of actually taking formal action, like Thursday or whenever, to expand those districts and be done with that thing?
And the risk is to the applicants, no?
Nothing to us, right?
Not really.
Or Hamiltonian or?
No, because you'd have additional property within the district, if you will, that if it wasn't infrastructureed out and built out, it would just sit there, it looks like any other vacant parcel within the district. And I think that's what probably Doug was getting to, that we can get a head start.
Right.
On fixing or addressing the I and I, that will lessen their risk, vis a vis the D E C directly with the village and consent orders and whatnot. I'm guessing they're willing to take that.
But just understand that we have to establish those expansions first, before anything can start happening.
Yes.
They're not gonna put money in when they don't have the expansion.
Correct, and the sewer, sewer, obviously, and, uh, the water, it, it's our plan, if you will, to have integrated it.
So my thought is, you know, two birds, one stone, if we expand those districts and, and all of this not risked, you know, almost immediately, then they would have the approval, the approved expansion, we would have the districts expanded, ready to go, and, uh, it would just speed up the whole process.
Ideally, but, but you're still gonna have to go through a number of, uh.
But they will.
Yes.
It's required so they can continue on the planning process for the department.
So, I'm thinking maybe we should really look at, maybe the D E C, do, do you have to stay, do this on Thursday, get it done?
Yeah, well, I think that's the thought.
Let's, let's.
I mean, formally, not just put on the agenda, this is.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
No, 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 by having a resolution, it's the whole nine yards.
Yeah, I guess, okay.
Yeah, I, I, I would.
Okay, all right. Now, I, I want one last thing, we, to show you the two thousand and eleven versus two thousand and ten, the I and I we had went up fifty-nine percent in Hamilton Park. That's significant, we, we've just got to reverse that thing, and so, what, I mean, I don't know what's gonna happen in twelve, or thirteen, or whatever, but those are the numbers the D E C and others are gonna see, saying, well, what, what are you doing about these things before we put more homes on that system? And so, uh, I mean, I see these numbers daily, and, and it's, it's kinda walking down the side, and I think, again, for forty thousand, we'd probably make a pretty good head start on this, so that when we, we could say, this is, here's what we've done from an engineering perspective, and it's done. But, anyway, a request, so I'll let Dennis work that out with y'all between now and Thursday. Any other questions?
Um, you had said before, Steve, you were talking about, uh, the parcels that are holding space, pay and date, the prep and the, I would, we, we all, I don't know if you're sure, we discussed this once or any of this, but, whether it's A or B, the part that we're going to hold is the part that's contiguous with the town plot.
Correct, correct.
So, even though it's a, what's called a municipal piece of property, um, it will continue the town plot all the way through to.
That, that'll, that will give the town a contiguous piece of land from Craigville Road to Old Chester Road.
Right.
Uh, and it, and it's also the piece where bridal paths, uh, which is where the horse made.
That's really what, I know that's, that's where the horse made, that parcel.
That's. That's either A or B, I forget.
Yeah, right.
Any other questions? How about, yeah, okay. Okay, well, we'll put it on there, first thing on Monday, then, Dennis can turn the midnight oil.
Thursday.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Thursday. Hello, Mr. Sweeney, anybody else who's required to get it done?
Yeah.
All right, fellas, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you all. Okay, Steve.
Okay.
Well, what I'll try and do, with the four set of pages, is get those documents done, it's impossible, because it's, it's like a lot of things, you're, you're, you're gonna remember a number of discussions we have, and you get appointments at various board members, maybe, mayor may not be as right, even if it's big. Again, not only the money, the timing, et cetera, et cetera.
You know, time test is by so much that you start to forget the rule.
Eight, eight months ago, we talked, uh.
And to give you an idea, uh, it's not only their fault, but, uh, there's a provision in one of these whereby the, it's giving the town the authority, if we so want, at some future date, to run that, uh, what I call a walking path through there. Now, if you remember, the residents were not happy about that either, okay, having people bumping their houses.
Dennis, the part that, you know.
Right, the type of thing, we may not even want that in the, in the instrument, but that's up to you guys.
No, I don't think we do, we basically committed when we had our public hearing, and we heard it loud and clear, they don't want any traffic going in and out of that subdivision, and, you know, I think we.
What subdivision you talking about?
Hamilton Park.
This is, this, this is not, this has to do with the walking path that has to do.
Right.
But there, but we'll go, oh, you're, he's talking about third of.
Which one are you talking about?
Okay, I don't know which one, we were all.
No, 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 that's the one.
Oh, but, now, there's one where we said that we, you know, we, we changed.
There's the walk, like, one, one, right.
Right, but that has something to do with hand park, it's a separate.
That, that's accurate, that's what I'm saying.
But indirectly, Doug, because you're taking this and, you're expanding the district, so these guys can be in the project. Oh, no, they don't care, because it's moved far away.
Well, they, that's right.
But that's what I'm talking about, you gotta, you gotta remember, you got seven board members at the planning level, plus all the public kids that they have, and there's still a lot of jockeying going on about bridal paths, and, you know.
But, but, I agree, but in reality, all you have to do is, when Kenny and I went out and had our, uh, meetings, meetings with, with the people in, in Hamilton Park, there's two things that they were really adamant about. Number one, they don't want a lot of paths going into their subdivision from outside.
Right.
Whatever that is, because it will bring potential danger to them. Number two is that they didn't want any roads, potential roads in the future going in. And so as long as those two are, that, that's what I was referring to in terms of paths, so, as long as those two are, are, take care.
Follow, you see, this one, again, I'd like to be split hairs, but I'm telling you, in this easement, there is a paragraph which recites that, going forward, the town board will have the authority, should they so determine, to put in all kinds of walking paths. If you follow, it's an issue which either the developer or the planning board couldn't come to, uh, closure on, there's still lobbying going on, so they're like, they more or less left it open.
I'm telling you, yes, we don't, that the town board does not want that. I saw the people on the planning board, said, we're the legislative body, it's gonna take.
And I, what I'm saying to you is, as an example, I just happened to see this, this, this surfaced for the first time in the last half a day.
Okay.
And, and in fact, uh, I spoke to Norton about it, and she's like, Dennis, I have the same concern, we don't even know why this is here, but it's there, and because it left the town board's discretion, you may, discretion, you may or may not wanna leave it. I'm like, no, 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 I'm telling you, my board's not gonna want that, because basically, by my prior conversations.
I think that there may be someone on the town, on the, on the planning board who wants a path or something.
That's probably true.
And you know what? Every time we talk to those people out there in Hamilton Park, it's a major, major wall.
Right.
And I think that this idea of selling and expanding of those districts, water and sewer, was part of this whole big parcel, uh, parcel to this.
Right.
And, and I think that, I mean, that's from my recollection, anyway.
Well, that's why what I'm gonna try and do is, I'll even get this to a piecemeal, because it's just like that conservation easement review recently. You look at it, and your concerns may not be the same concerns as the other twenty pairs of eyes look at it.
Right.
So I, I think it's important, and I can start getting it there, I'm just telling you, okay?
Realistically, I think Jefferson, Hamilton Park, that Old Chester Road.
Good luck.
I know.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, there shouldn't be, there shouldn't be anybody. Uh, yeah, well, as part of that, I'll master watching, watching, I'll focus on.
Ah, yeah.
I don't want to continue beating this thing, because, never, there was a few items, there's six items that we discussed at the legislature, on board at one occasion.
Yes.
One, but I, I don't remember all six, certainly one was a bath.
Right.
One bath.
Right.
Another one was a sidewalk.
Correct.
Sidewalk, I think, was on the opposite side of the street, and we all came to.
For what reason, yeah, why?
Why would you want?
Let me ask some extra money, because we say.
That's worth, that's worth taking for the, those things on the water.
And, and those are the two that I, I recall, they're, they're, we all, we agreed, both sides, on all of those six items, but I don't know whether it was ever reduced, that it's actually in writing somewhere.
That's what I'm.
This is what we both agreed to.
That's right, and that's what I'm concerned about, and also the verbiage, as to whether it's, if you agree to.
We need to go back to those minutes of that meeting, where we discussed it, because that's pretty, you know, weird, we, the board reananalysed it, when Steve brought, it was six items, and we checked them off.
Right.
So they can proceed on supposedly with their applications or whatever.
See, I, I don't know what their reaction's gonna be about, if you will, keep advancing us, the money, and they, because if you remember, that was a bone contention.
They want three tanks, I want to hear three of them.
Well, you know what, that's personal, that's why I asked.
I would say.
And I, and I saw Mr. Walker kind of nod, like he's gonna go back and talk to Mr. Walker.
It would make sense, I mean, to them also, but again, they wanna live their exposure.
I understand, okay, we're together, well, let's work diligently, and you know what, the worst scenario is if it's on Thursday, it's not ready, we'll go to the following Monday, or two weeks.
Or the, whatever day, yeah, they just wanna get going back to the health department, that's, that's a cumbersome process, and, and they have to resubmit.
Okay, very good.
I don't intend to say this, but I don't, going to all the public kids, I think, get everything. Do they have a, a plan B for the people on Old Chester Road, in case that they develop this property? The old one, that was the downed, there's, there's no one to, I remember we had some discussion with that.
His cost.
I don't know how, I don't think you can, how it funny worked out, yeah, how amazing it was to try it out.
It, you know, they were going to, they were gonna cover electricity and all these other kinds of things on certain things, as we were ramping this thing up, and I, we need Dennis to live here to tell us.
Yeah, I, I feel.
I just want, do you remember, was there any concessions you were part of, I can add, you, your home was one of them that are affected by that, does there ever been a sign?
It's just in their, uh.
It's true, I, now, I just wanted to point out.
Their F B I S, but it, the, the burden is on me, on us, to prove that it's the development that's causing the drawdown on my well, even though I have tests that show that their well drilling has drawn down, but I would have to prove it, and then they would hook me to their system, but one year free, and after that, I have to pay. That's what, I don't know if that was finally accepted, if that's what it would be.
Okay, the, the, the D E C, they'll review that, and I guess gave them their.
I had a question, I just wanted to know if they would ever.
The, um, but there was an issue, is they were building one, two, three, four houses of that, and, uh, I, I can't remember exactly what it was, whether it's the sewage or the water, that there's added costs for operation, that was, they were ramping up.
I think it's electrical costs.
It was the electrical costs, and they were going to figure out what that would be, and they would be paying that versus people.
They were gonna pay the electrical cost all the way up until time, right, that it's fully completed.
Right, that needs to be in print, is what I'm saying.
I don't think that exists in print.
I know it doesn't, but it needs to be, but that needs to be, you see, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm bringing up.
Yeah, and, and that's why, again, the, I have this discussion valuable, because, you know, it means, oh, well, good that you want me to do this Thursday, I may do also, but it's very possible, and a document like that could take, who knows, some hours and drafts.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
And I, I.
If we don't put it, if we don't put it on for Thursday, it's not gonna, it's like a term paper, it's, it's taken eight months.
Okay, it's gonna be rushed, you're, you're.
Well, I want, but it is a rush, because I want that forty thousand dollars when I get it up.
Yeah, but, 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 you, you, you might be rushing, but if you should get an item like you, you said, you'll chew up that forty thousand dollars by your hard payment for a few years, because the belt was not done.
We have to be thorough.
Well, but you can only be thorough if you have time to look at it.
Well, I understand that, but until they write it and get it to us, I've had this on the agenda at least a half a dozen times, and it's never been attached, so it's getting past.
Well, to give you an idea, though, I think this concept would probably be a revelation for them, not that he wouldn't agree to it.
Why don't we talk about it?
No, but a revelation, I mean, nobody's in order to do it, I can guarantee, I haven't seen it, never submitted it.
We will go back to the minutes of that meeting, it was discussed in our public hearing, when they were here.
And that's fine, Doug, but what I'm saying to you is, I can, I can, I can guarantee you, that Mr. Esposito and Mr. Walker, at this moment, have not authorized or been authorized to draft that instrument and present it to us.
Well, okay.
I'm just saying.
I don't doubt that a bit, but I'm just saying, we need to get it ready, we'll put it in the shop.
Well, then, maybe that's what you, maybe we should rush it.
Well, we, we are, we need to be prudent, we need to be prudent, we need to be prudent in, in a rush, but, but if we don't set some kind of goal date, it's gonna.
Language out there for a long.
But see, this is where a lot of, uh, breakdown of communication, that they left her tonight, having been promised, we're gonna do this Thursday night, there's no doubt in my mind, that was fine.
You said, based on what Sweeney, Sweeney has promised, he doesn't get that many.
Right, but what I'm saying is, there was no mention of what was discussing at the moment, on this electrical.
Well, you know what, Dennis, we, you know, we gotta put a reason on this.
We've been there for months, we've.
Well, you know, you gotta do it, I'm not saying you shouldn't do it, I'm just saying.
Well, I don't mind it, the second Thursday night, and so, you know, there's still a couple more issues here, this first time we've seen it. Well, I don't mind it the second Thursday night, and so, you know, there's still a couple more issues here, this is the first time we've seen it.
Well, let me put it.
Well, I would hope they would.
These issues were brought out at that particular time, they were taking the notes, and if they're drawing this up, they need to put it in there. If they don't, we're going to correct them to make sure it is in there.
If that, if that part comes now.
It does, see, what you have to understand is, I have three or four hundred pages they have already drafted. It's everything you want, it's everything they want, it's just stamped draft, or second draft, or whatever. And I am saying to you, the things we are discussing night, tonight, are not part of any of those documents, or they should be.
Well, I think.
Dennis, this is what Doug said, we have to go back to the minutes and refresh our memory, because. What I'm saying to you, the first call I got to make in the morning is to summarize all this, or then. They left here with the distinct impression, we're approving whatever they want, or they're interested.
No, we didn't know, it was going to be on the agenda, you know.
Okay, all right.
I do agree with Dennis, I think those people.
Well, that's okay.
It looks to us somewhat out of catastrophe.
Yeah, I'll give you okay to go tomorrow.
I have no problem.
The government house suggested that we were going to pass this.
Well, the thing we were talking about passing is strictly the expansion of the two districts.
Right, correct.
Without any specifics. Why can't we, all I'm saying, you can expand the districts, they could pull out. You have an expanded district.
That's right.
There's no commitment to them on anything, other than if it helps them by saying we formally expanded the district.
The town board. If all the developers agree, or they're agreeing to pay to you X number of dollars.
Those are different documents.
That's Thursday night also.
Well, let's do this, let's do this. You know, I don't mind giving it Thursday or something, I'm done, well, guess what, it's going to go to the next meeting. But I think that we've got to go back to the minute that we had at public hearing, to determine who said what, what was said, and.
Well, they agreed.
And they agreed.
Yeah, I always agree.
And that it'd be in this document that we review on Thursday.
But, just to give you a heads up, some of this stuff wasn't discussed at a public hearing. The expansion of the district wasn't so forth, but we got into the nitty gritty about that electrical, that was something that went up at the time. That could have been at the time of when we were doing the executive session.
I'm just trying to say, it might not be there.
Our engineer was right here.
I'm just trying to say.
Well, we'll see.
If it's not in there, then we, but I think we've got.
But we all know that we did talk about it.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
And they may be in agreement.
My only concern on that was to expand the district. Not approve any of the documentation, because we were talking about months of things that they have to clear up, and so on and so forth. My only comment was in relation to expanding the two districts, period. There was no commitment that if we expanded it, we would accept everything that they gave us, or wouldn't. All of that stuff has to be reviewed. My only, my only thought was, or the thought of bonus, the expansion of those two districts. And if that would help them, to show to the health department or whomever, that those districts have been expanded. Number one, we got commitment from the village, so for seventy-five homes, it doesn't have to be theirs, just seventy-five more homes, we've got to commit. Now we expand the district, that's the next step.
See, we're only expanding the water district. The sewer is going by separate contract to the village. They have a whole new, you know, that's where they get that different rate structure for that.
No, no, it's not an individual district.
No, it's part of the Hamilton.
No, I'm telling you.
Part of the Hamiltonian sewer district. At our rates.
That is not what the document says that I presently have.
It's going to be metered.
Okay, that's fine.
Your document's wrong. It's going to be metered separately.
I made prepared to submit it, I'm just telling you.
It's metered separately.
Correct.
Metered, but it's going through the Hamiltonian Park Sewer.
That would certainly, I would certainly think that would be the intention.
Well, that was what. I'll give you some clarity, it has to be the same, because I remember you saying, you can't have a district being charged.
Exactly right.
What I'm saying, I remember that conversation, I don't disagree, what I'm saying, I don't have a document that says that.
Oh, I understand.
Oh, okay.
This is why we didn't rush.
But your document was the one that they want us to do before we had a public hearing.
That's right.
Oh, yeah, okay.
We have a lot of work to do.
Yeah, I think so.
More we can do anyway. Even just expanding the district. I'm stretching it now, but I thought I heard you say at one time, many, many months ago, that if you expand those districts, then you're obligated to make sure that those people get water and get sewer, correct?
That you are including them in the district, they're entitled. Right, they are entitled.
Not that, so this was, this whole thing goes belly up. And now we're dealing with another cast of characters, ideas, but now.
It's our obligation.
If we pass that, those waters in the districts, we are obligated to give those.
Yeah, you've got.
Evidently, maybe we don't want to with that.
That's true, just like C and D in Arcadia, or the undeveloped portion out in Hamilton, they're within those districts.
C and D is within the district, you don't have to approve the lots until they meet all the requirements. If this district is expanded well, expanded to it, it's just expanded, if any developer comes in, we will.
Something else within the.
That's right, that's right, because they didn't want to pay until they had a settlement.
You're working at that.
I, I.
Okay, so anyway, okay, but the starting, the starting point, it's a good discussion. Starting point is, we've got to get the minutes.
Yeah, you've got to refresh your memories and review your mind.
Okay.
The districts, we get the money.
Now, Dennis, help us out on this next one. Five and six. I didn't, I didn't get a letter today from Kelly.
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
Yeah, that is because it was a firm client privilege, and it was recommended that it not be made to be a public document, by the office.
Okay.
And basically, they're meeting, in fact, they're meeting on that issue right now, at the Z V A.
Item six or item five?
Item five.
Five. Oh, okay.
Yeah, item five, they're actually meeting tonight on that, and their decision will determine what discussion you have.
What discussion?
And if any actions required, correct.
I think we hash it up the discussion before the actions require, to make sure that all the programs met.
We usually do that.
Yeah, well, now the way it looks, it looks like we're voting on this fight, and still care, but he doesn't have a straight line.
Well, we have to understand, and let me just crystallize it for you. There is, there's an issue before the Z V A at the present time, as to what is before the Z V A, as petitioned by Little League. Initially, it was thought that they were petitioning for approval of a sign, a sign, which had to conform the code, and which may or may not require variances. There has been serious discussion that legally speaking, it wouldn't be classified as a sign. It's an accessory use to a playground or youth recreation program, in addition to a public facility. And they talked about reducing and eliminating any number of letters and words, if you will, on any logo on the scoreboard. So what you're talking about now is the initial threshold question, I'm sorry.
Well, they take the telephone number off.
And they're taking the dot com, to my knowledge, it's just like a plaque notification, no advertising, that is just a scoreboard, Middletown Honda. You know, it's just a scoreboard, and the Middletown Honda may have a.
There's a box somewhere.
Yeah, I don't know, that's what it's for now.
We asked too, what is. But the Middletown Honda is near the bottom, and Goach and Little League's at the top.
Well, the other thing I don't understand is, how can that private organization petition anything to be placed on public property? Wouldn't it have to be the Joint Recreation Commission?
Well, you know, this is where we got into this, the reason why, okay, well, it says, as required by section ninety-seven, section forty-seven.
Sorry.
And if I read this, it says, no signs shall be placed on municipal-owned property without permission of the town board.
That's right.
So it says, so basically, if the town board says, yes, you can, then it can be.
But if it's not a sign, you're not talking about.
I understand that, and so now we're saying this may not be a sign.
Right, this may be a structure, or something, it's more, we still necessarily have to approve on a public.
You know, also, the application would have to put all the designs and so on and so forth, before we could take action.
Probably.
That's it, right here, and by the way, I'll get the rest of it coming. Not just this one page that we put, because there's more off-site advertising and so on.
I don't know, yeah.
Okay. But I'm not ready to move on this, I'll tell you that.
The application was not made by Little League. The application, the application was made by Joy Rec.
Oh, well, on this here.
I don't know what's over there, I don't know. Okay, you may be right, but I don't know.
Well, if you read the agenda, it says, requires section blah, 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 motion to give permission to the Goach and Little League to place a scoreboard or sign on municipal.
This was, this was before we today got information from the planning board attorney that this was not even a sign. This is a consequence of Dennis and I talking early on, that this board never pursued that sentence that I just said, which is, the town board can give permission to have a sign on municipal property.
No, it says there's a sign here for erected without the town board's permission.
But if it's not a sign.
No sign shall be placed on municipal-owned property without permission of the town board.
But if it's not a sign, or not classified, or definitely meaning.
So, okay, so we got that one, so then the next thing is, is to discuss waving, zoning board, discuss waving zoning board of appeals fees for review of the Craigville Park scoreboard slash sign.
Now, Kelly is on the Z V A.
But it also talks about no advertising on municipal property.
So what happened over there, Kelly?
Yeah, we're private.
Am I allowed to disclose this?
Yeah. Well, actually, we need to know, because we need to, so the board can act, or not act.
We're not going to act tonight.
Yeah, of course, of course.
Well, we're not a group, we're a little board.
Our thoughts were that if, there's a distinction between acknowledging a sponsor and advertising.
Right.
Okay, and if we can keep the advertising out, then we were going to make, okay, so if it just says Middletown Honda, but it doesn't say Middletown dot Honda dot com, or it doesn't say a phone number, or things like that, then we were okay with it. And we've been told from the rec that they very approached Middletown Honda, and Honda said, fine, as long as they say our name.
John, did you read the threshold question as to whether it's a sign, or just, or a scoreboard?
Maybe they should, maybe they should do this and send it to us and write it.
Yeah, I think.
Send it to us and write it.
I'd rather, I'd rather have the whole board on it.
There you go.
Okay.
Back to you.
That would be just what.
Okay.
Okay.
Going on.
The issue is, the other one, I clearly understand, was by number six, when it gives the waving of the fees, so that the J R C could appear before the Z V A.
That's, that issue could be.
That's what I was working on.
Okay.
Can that be agreed to, after the time, before we've.
That's the problem with that, it says scoreboard on it, doesn't say sign.
No, it says scoreboard slash sign.
No.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, it does, you're right.
It could, but I don't know what they appear, see, the only thing concerning about that is, the J R C is asking for, if you want to waive their fee, if you will, payment, in connection with this application, or basically any application, that's what we're talking about. Because I don't know what, I don't know what this application is, that's why this is, John.
This application was a reference to the sign.
But I don't, we don't know what's the sign. Yeah. Actually, it's a scoreboard. Oh, yeah.
Well, what is it? All right, I think we owe.
But is it also a sign?
It is.
It is. To get to that.
For Middletown Honda.
For the Z V A to get to that decision, what my request, not just my request, it's my request of the Z V A's on the U S A, was to get them to go through the process with waiving the three hundred fifty dollars that would cost them normally to go before the Z V A. That's all, that's all we're.
We didn't talk about that.
I know you didn't.
No, that's not, that's not.
That is this board.
It doesn't matter, we funded it anyway, it's our money, the board puts the money into their budget. So we're talking, it really doesn't matter, is it chicken, or six or a half?
That's the case, I'd like to make a motion that we allow the J R C to appear before the Z V A.
Let me ask you a question, has.
Here's a second, just for discussion.
Have this gone through the planning process yet, and been rejected?
I honestly do not know.
Has this been rejected, in order to go to the Z V A, you have to have it rejected by the building?
You could theoretically go to them for interpretation of the code. I don't know what they've done, this is my problem.
Let me please share with you what I think.
I want to make sure it's unlegal.
Yeah, I know.
I think here's what happened. You look at this specification, if the sign, it can be fifty square feet, something is fifty-six point, some odd, they winged some more off by taking dot com off, and the telephone number, and some other things. It's still not down to fifty feet, I think, and so Neil, I think, put it right into the Little League and J R C. I don't know who's taking over that, I think J R C has taken the.
Well, that's the right way to do it.
And so, that's the situation of how it got there. It was, it was not accepted by the building inspector as being per the code, if it's considered a sign.
Well, the code calls for individual signs not to exceed sixteen square feet, and any accumulation of signs. And they're talking, these are three signs, how they become three signs, I don't know, to make no more than fifty square feet. But any, like a mall signs, what they're talking about, but any individual sign should not be more than sixteen square feet.
But just so the board's aware, I think what happened, though, when that went over there, what we're talking about just in this moment, was interpreted by council or that board as not necessarily rewiring a sign application in variance.
Okay.
That it more appropriately would be a definitional or interpretation issue, as to whether what they're proposing is in fact a sign, or may not even fall within those restrictions, because it's a scoreboard, it's not even fine. I'm just that one.
Scoreboard is fine?
Yeah, that's why.
Mine has somebody's, a retail establishment's name, and they are for profit, and it does say that.
No, I don't say.
It says.
Yeah, I can read to you from a memo, which I didn't prepare, but the council prepared, these are parts commenting on this thing. But I just, that was what was over there tonight, was my understanding.
Let me ask this question, as our legal advisor, because it looks to me, we can't act on either one of these tonight without, although I think we can't make it.
Second one.
Okay, six, all right, because we don't, but I did put it down here in Craigville Park, a scoreboard slash sign, because I'm not sure what it is.
That'd be appropriate. Otherwise, you're making a generic blanket forgiveness of all fees for the Joy Rec going forward, which I don't think is your intention, because it certainly is.
It's just for this.
Right, and so a sign slash scoreboard would be appropriate.
Well, if this is sign, they are known in the office as, that is a scoreboard and not a sign. And that was presented to us, the J R C or the Little League presented it to us, that this is a scoreboard, it just, it just happens to have the phone number and W W dot com and Honda on it, but it's really a donated scoreboard, and by the way, a donation means that no retail establishment or commercial establishment can realize a profit from anything that says anything on the sign, and that's a bill that went through the New York State Assembly, I'll get the assembly. So there's a lot of issues here on municipal public property, because when you open these gates, you'll have every organization wanting to put advertising on our recreation park, and all the people that live on Brookside Manor and across the street at Hamiltonian Park, their property will be impacted by these huge signs all over our recreation field. And I, for one, I mean, if our, if our people in Congress had taken the same position I can take, we probably wouldn't be in this, in this position that we are now in the United States, just try to defend the law. So, and I know it's only one man's opinion, but.
No, but let's go back to item six, we know where you stand on the sign, if it's a fact of the sign. So, is there any more discussion on this particular item? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion carries. So, we waive the fees for the.
Scoreboard.
For the zoning board appeals to look at this issue, and again, I know it's been weighed in by the, in by the attorneys for the, that board, as to what is it.
Correct, which they made me ribby to that, but if you follow, it's not here yet.
No, I've not seen that.
Yeah, you're right, no, you, that, in fact, just so the board was aware, I said to Doug that what we should do, I'll contact them, I'll have a copy of the legal memorandum, we'll make it part of your mailers, your informational package. After discussion, it was like, no, you really can't do that yet, because this is only our opinion. That board has to adopt, if you will, that recommendation or that theory, and only then, you have to be informed of it, or it should be informed of it, so it would be premature, that's why you don't have.
That board has to understand.
Oh, yeah.
Tremendous license with what this says, and it's very specific in our code, you can't take license, that's where I'm coming from.
I, I-
If the code said it, Phil would say aye.
That's it.
But the zoning board of the field has to be asked for a number of things. Are these three separate signs?
Are, is there a sign period?
Is it a sign period?
Right, exactly.
You know what, so there are no issues, and I don't know what their application that we're waiving, I don't know what the application was.
And see, to my knowledge, now, I could be wrong, but I don't want to put John in a spot, to my knowledge, to my discussions with, with their council today, with the building inspector, it was intended that these issues would be resolved tonight at that board level. Now, I don't know whether they released any resolutions.
They can.
Did you take any action, have their resolutions shipped?
I don't believe so.
Okay, see, I don't, I don't know, that's what I know.
I'm not sure if they-
Well, I think this whole thing- I'd ra, if I may, I'd rather, whenever a decision is made over there, official, or then it comes over here, and then you know about it. I don't want my opinion-
That's all I'm saying.
You know, maybe I could be taken out of context, I'd rather it be official, and then, and then you'll know exactly what they're saying.
I agree.
I think that this whole issue also brings up, I think, we were talking about in the past, signage in the town of Goshen, uh, we have code, it is law, but it certainly needs to be updated. And I think there are several of us on this board who think that, not just this kind of thing, but lots of other electronic signs, this, that, whatever, and so it's time, this just brings up to me, um, that maybe we're not in touch with what's going on in the world we're living in.
I agree. Good idea.
All right.
I guess you want to jump in on this, because Joe just made a comment, you're not, you're not alone on this, he thought up a lot, in my mind, a lot of legal-
I thought I was alone.
We have to, we have to look.
I was prepared to vote.
Okay. And I think you, see, at the ZBA, it's very confusing to me, so, what Phil just said about, I'm going to New York State, that's actually, we have to look at all this to be sure if we, it might work, like, not issue.
You know, we would be, as for what a donation is, yeah, we, we had Jeff Capella look at that, back five, six, seven years ago, when I was on joint rec, and I was a councilman. And, uh, I can't recall his interpretation, but it was not binding to us somehow, I don't know what it was.
And, and in fact, I looked at it whenever I came back, and, and, well, with respect to Mr. Capella, there was a couple of terms involved in that, I think I advise you tonight, but I, I did not come to the same conclusion, or I agreed what was in the-
Maybe didn't take it enough.
Why, anyway, I don't go there, you know.
Well, we have precedent already that we declined, on, on, under somebody else. So we have precedent there, and now we're doing something other than what we set a precedent for.
You may or may not be, but I don't think we're there.
We did, two years ago, we did. We defined the realtor who wanted to do the exact same thing, and we told him, take the name off, we'll give you a, take your name and phone number, we'll give you a plaque, we'll give you recognition, we'll give you everything, and thank you for donating the scoreboard. Well, it wasn't going to be donated unless he could put advertising on it. We have the exact same issue two years later. I'm just telling you, well, we had the exact same issue 20 years ago, and the Pepsi signs went up, and they're still out there.
Well, I think that what-
Like, George, you weren't involved with that, George.
I, I know I was.
You were the mayor, you were the mayor.
I was, I was involved with it.
Yeah, I know, I'm saying, but they were instructed for one year because of the, and I mentioned it.
Yeah.
Pepsi was going to give them free solid, and that was a good idea, that promised us it's going to be one year, that's why that metal, that's why that aluminum piece is on there, it's like, we were promised that it was going to go back down and steal the, you're right, it's still there. I mean, I'm, 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 I'm going to look at, before I vote, on any legal, uh, issues that was brought up. I mean, I'm not going to vote on, vote on something, but I'm writing New York State law.
Well, I don't know, I mean-
I don't know, I, I-
That's the definition of a donation.
All right.
It says that donation has no, so retail profit, I forget the exact language, but I can tell you this.
Well, I, I do know that, I do know that when, again, I'm going back to when I was on Joint Recations, that, uh, one of the things brought to the table was, and they said, go around other communities in the state of New York, and it doesn't make it right, wrong, or otherwise, but somehow their interpretation is such that their signs galore. Now, Dennis and I remember when we were playing Little League ball in Erie Street, and there might have been 300 signs over there.
Yeah.
Four by 12, or four by eight, or whatever they were.
I see them all over the parks in Brooklyn, but not up here in the-
No, I'm saying that they were here in the Village of Coast, and they're right, they were joint recreations, they were on Craigville Park today.
Well, just on a side, Doug, when we went through the signage to, for the parks themselves, saying Craigville Park, the Town Hall in Goshen, we took great pains to make sure that those signs were the proper colors, that would blend in with the environment, that they were earth tones, and small signs saying Lion's Park, Erie Street, I was on that board, and we went through great pains designing those signs, so they wouldn't, uh, they wouldn't stand out and, and, and become eye pollution, visual pollution. Okay.
But you know, but let me, let me, like they are, I think that we're going to, no, I think that we're going to need, we're going to public, public hearing and public input. I think this is an issue, we could be here that night, there are people in the audience that had nothing to do with Little League, well, what's the big, and I'll be honest with you, I've been on the street there, and what's the big deal? The town board ain't got this sign. And these are people that have nothing to do with, uh, Little League, or whatever, so-
Their property board of that, where that sign is-
I don't know.
The four signs that they're planning to put up, because he was, the one person said, we're not putting one, we're putting four. Okay.
No, so he did say they needed three more, not that we're going to put three more.
No, no, we'll pull, we can pull-
I remember, I remember.
The point is, we're designing our own property, that, that we have to overlook it, that signs are trying to sell or buy a piece of property that overlooks those advertising.
I'm not going to get into it right now.
No.
No, I think I'm just-
I spoke to people in Ham Park, I'll be quite honest with you, I don't want to go there, I spoke to people in Ham Park.
The Brookside, other people.
Well, I didn't get to that part yet.
Okay.
Anyway, we were people in, in Ham Park, and quite a number of people, because there was quite a number of people here that, two weeks ago, and they don't really care, and I spoke to other people, well, I've been around, I've been trying to take a survey, both people, I don't even have to take a survey, they're coming up to me, and most of them, 99%, that's the big, like you said. Brookside, I only spoke to two.
Well, anyway, I think-
We'll agree, we're together, there's-
Huh?
We'll agree to this one.
No, I'm only, no, no, the only thing I'm trying to point out, Phil, is that I actually spoke to people in those developments, that's all I'm trying to point out. I'm not putting it out forward on an assumption.
But I think what it, what it points to me is, in our, this is everybody's community, not just board's community, this is everybody's community.
Absolutely.
And what we have to do is have laws reflect the desires of the communities, whatever they are. And not only this, but there are signs that we have out in the, the business signs and other things, where businesses come in and, and are kind of, they say, we're, we're back in the dark ages on certain kinds of signs, or they're these electronic signs, other kinds of things. So, anyway, it's an area I think that in weeks to come, we need to look at so that we, we reflect what-
Long overdue.
Long overdue.
Okay. With that, um, I'll go back then, the, the big thing will be on Thursday night, we're going to have, uh, some information coming forward on the New York Farms, Regardia Water Sewer Districts. We're going to have the, review the current status of the property fee round program, and, um, but this, this is a, this is a, again, I put this together last Wednesday, it's since Wednesday to today, all the information that we have got, this system, this new law that's stayed in New York for open, for open meeting law, this is going to be very difficult, because people could have come in tonight for some of these things, and they, they're not on the agenda, because additional information from Thursday, Friday, and Monday is taking them off the agenda. So, it's one, it's not as easy as the, but we're trying with this law to do what we're supposed to do. Would someone like to make a motion, then we go to executive session, we intend not to return, to discuss the current status of the CSEA negotiations, and the following taxers, Sherries, Lubavich, LeBlanc, and Woodland State.
I can add to that, 76 Maple.
Seventy six.
Maple, and a third category of, uh, discussion before attorney client, privileged information.
Okay.
So, second.
Will you take one comment before you go?
No.
Any discussion?
None.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
What am I, what am I, what am I?
What's your problem, Paul?
You know my feeling on this, uh, uh, signage in the-
No, no.
A, a question for you. If, if you do allow a scoreboard with advertisement on it, are you prepared to allow advertisements which are sponsored, donated, or sponsored, on town police cars, and on the side of Village Hall, and on other, I'm sorry, Town Hall, and on other town properties?
We don't know this is going to be a sign.
I said it.
Yeah, I, I don't know the answer to that.
If you allow the advertisements, are you, are you prepared to allow other sponsored advertisements?
I brought that up already.
Because, because it's, it's tantamount to putting advertisements on the police cars, like they have on taxi cabs in New York.
Sure.
It's the same thing.
Buses, another type of bus.
It's a private entity that's bringing it in on municipal property.
No, that's not true, that's not true. You're talking about putting a sign on public vehicles, on public, on trucks, trucks, the buses, that's not the same thing.
It's the same thing.
See, this is why we need, this one, we need to look at the law.
It's a little rant.
We need to look at the code.
It's a code about the highway, the state principal.
Well, I understand what I, what I was understanding.
Well, that's why we need to look at this whole area of, of that.
I'm all for, I'm all for accepting donations, I'm all, I'm all for an entity donating the scoreboard. We, to put advertising on it is a whole different issue.
We want to hide it.
Okay.
Jerry?
Yeah, Doug, I find it disturbing, a sign is a sign is a sign, but it's not a sign. If this is approved, Honda, well, how about Anthony's Pizzeria? How about a religious organization? How about the man in the mule?
The adult store.
Adult bookstore. It's opening a Pandora's box.
Well, this is over with the ZBA, who tell us what they're feeling, it doesn't mean we have to accept it.
Okay.
But again, I think we need to go back, as I've said this third time now, and look at this whole area of code, because there are a lot of people, I mean, a lot of people out there who think this, this town board's off a reservation with the pushback we put on these signs.
But they're not looking at-
And, and, and I'm telling you, these are the people who stop me in the street or call me, you know, there are three or four of you in here who are learned people, who've heard all the discussion.
Yeah.
But a lot of people don't have benefit of all that, and they're, what's the big deal?
Well, then we're going to group together and say, well, let's say, this is the speed, the speed limit should be 100 miles an hour, Craigville Road, because we live there, we don't care. We want it to be there.
No, no, Jerry, but when you, what, when you have, when you, when you have public hearings, when you have public hearings on any issue, anybody can say anything, and what we try to do as a legislative body is look at all of that, take it into consideration, and vote accordingly.
Oh, you mean like unelected youth people because of a certain group that disagrees with you? Is that what we mean?
You're not allowed to do that, you're charged.
Oh, I see.
I'm talking about all the issues.
You're not allowed to engage your talk with them.
Oh, you're talking about totalities, I'm sorry.
You're not allowed to.
Okay, anybody else got, okay, Neil, you're nicer.
Neil, you have a floor, only if you're nicer.
Only very. I have a question, I can hear you, man. I think the story told that this Pepsi sign went up, and it was only supposed to be there for a year, and it's been there ever since, why hasn't it been removed at any point?
I, I left the joint recreation committee.
And, and whose responsibility is it?
Not torturing us.
You go, you go.
Just as much as-
Neil, you're in me, wait. So, the four guys are going to jump all over me.
Mr. Paul, is this my question?
Okay, one meeting, folks, Jerry?
Even though you said-
Okay, okay, guys, one meeting, we got a question?
I just want to know, do you have more information about the dial of us? Because you're having a public hearing, but you're not giving any specifics about what?
That's correct.
Is the fare being, uh, is it, is the fare being increased?
We're, we're not ready for that, when we, uh, we've given some information with the county on this, um, we have to negotiate this with the CSEA, we're only going to talk about it tonight, so this is a proposal, and it's not locked, it's going to be read by the public.
But the public hearing is, is a definite?
It's definite, and, but then we certainly, we're going to speak, and we still have the, when the CSEA, but it should be, we're going to do it, it will involve rating rates or will, uh, now changing the bus gas. If we're going to keep it, we've got to take costs out, so, so, we're not, we have a-
So, more information will follow.
Oh, yeah, well, I'll give it to you.
It's a chicken shit, man.
We have to have it for the public hearing.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying.
But, but, just to help, yeah, clarification, I think when we do a public hearing, I think in public hearings, that we put in the paper that the county totally recommended, we have, I think, we have to put the new rates and-
We do, but we have to do that, but all we have to, what, what Robert said then was a proposal of what we're trying to do, that we have to negotiate and do all the other things. So we're not ready to take that document and put it into the-
We had to tell them where, where-
Well, I would just put it as, you know, other town news, just that people would be alerted that there is going to be a public hearing, and these issues, rate increase for, reduction, uh, service reduction.
Basically, there could be changes in the, hopefully we'll have either that or the same, but, so that we don't spend, and spend, and spend, we've got to get on with this program, because-
Yeah, well- Dial of us, yeah. I didn't get there with it.
You, you, you know, it's, it's public, it's not a big thing, I'm not going to mention fares, but, of course, today, under the circumstances, it's, it's $20 a ride.
And we charge 50%.
Did you hear what I said? $20 a ride.
Well, isn't it subsidized by the state?
Uh, if, with the-
That's after?
No, no, that's not it.
What, what, oh, $10 after?
I had some interruptions here, I'm just going to give it.
It's all for the Louis?
It's, 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 before subsidizing, it's twenty dollars a ride, with subsidizing, it still comes out to maybe twelve to fifteen dollars. One way, when I say one way, all right? You, you must know what the seniors are paying today, you know? I, I made it publicly all those, all those months, you know, there, there hasn't been a fare increase since nineteen eighty-three, it's still the same rate, and everything has gone, you all know diesel is probably five times the amount, you know, it's all that stuff, but it is way out there, way out there.
See, that's why other areas, guys, you just stop the service.
Yes.
And we don't want to stop that.
And we don't, we're, we're gonna modify it, and, uh, and we think it's gonna be very...
I think that'd be a very interesting article, to give the whole picture.
Well, we have the whole picture.
Well, there, just, one of the things you have to do at the public hearing, you have to make some type of presentation, which is information, all the information, so, but anyway, that's it. Huh?
People need that information before the public hearing. You need that information before the public hearing.
Yeah, like I look at this, there's, we, we do have responsibilities for, you know, we've got to look through this list of things, we've got to do for this, I mean, for this transportation law, or whatever, so we'll do that, but tonight, to get the ball rolling, we needed to start with the, setting the public hearing, so we can, you know, so, it's a, it'll be an interesting article, but I'm sure you'll have lots of information to talk about.
Well, I'm just saying, I don't want to wait and come for the public hearing, and then put it in the paper, it's like...
No, 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 you don't.
I think it should be before, so when people come to a public hearing, maybe, it might be better.
It has to be posted, it has to be posted, it has to be posted, once you propose rate increases or something.
The, the public meeting announcement will be published at legal notice officially, and should not be, and shall be posted at least twenty to thirty days prior to the public meeting, so, we're gonna have to post some stuff, and again, Phil and I are meeting with the union on Wednesday, and we have to do that, and we'll go all that, yeah, so it'll be, it'll be...
Posted.
Okay, all right, folks, thank you very much for coming.